Good evening and welcome to the January 18th Clearwater City Council Meeting. I'd like to call the Apostle Norma Fontaine-Filbert from the Garden of Brace Ministries to do the invocation, and then ask you to please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Psalm 27. The Lord is my light and my salvation; whom shall I fear? The Lord is the strength of my life; of whom shall I be afraid? When the wicked even my enemies and my foes came to eat my flesh, they stumbled and they fell. Though a hostile camp against me, my heart shall not fear. Though war should rise against me, in this will I be confident. One thing have I desired of the Lord, and that one thing will I seek after: that I may dwell in the house of the Lord, that I may gaze upon his beauty, that I may inquire in his temple. For in the time of trouble he shall hide thee in his pavilion, in the suit of his tabernacle. He shall hide me and shall set me upon a rock. And now shall my head be lifted up above my enemies, run about me. Therefore I will offer in his tabernacle sacrifices of praise and thanksgiving. I will sing, yes, I will praise unto the Lord. Hear my cry, O Lord, when I crown to you; have mercy upon me and answer me. When thou said, Seek my face, my heart said, Lord, your face will I seek. Hide not thy face far from me; put not thy servants away in anger. Thou hast been my help; leave me not, neither forsake me, O God of my salvation. When my father and mother forsake me, then the Lord will lift me up. Teach me thy way, O Lord, and lead me in the plain path because of my enemies. Deliver me now unto the will of my enemies, for false witnesses are rising up against me. I would have fainted if I had not believed that I would see the goodness of the Lord in the land of the living. Wait on the Lord; be of good courage, and he shall strengthen thy heart. Wait again, I say; wait on the Lord, let us pray. O gracious God, Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, we come before you this evening with hearts of praise and adoration, acknowledging you as almighty God, the Creator of heaven and earth, the one who spoke and creation became, the one who breathed and man became a living soul. God be blessed your name, and we thank you for the birth of life in our bodies. We thank you for your love and kindness and your tender mercies. We thank you for your grace, and we thank you, dear God, for allowing us to assemble one more time about the people's business. Father, we thank you, dear God, for each of our leaders. We thank you, dear God, for your one declaration that we ought to pray for our leaders. We ought to hold them, and God, this evening, we do just that. We pray that the spirit of unity and the bond of peace will exist among each one. And we pray, dear God, that your wisdom will be infused into each heart, even as they go about your business, the people's business, about your agenda and the people's agenda. So, God, I pray a blessing upon each one. I pray, dear God, that it would strengthen, not only physically but emotionally. I pray, dear God, that even those that continue to serve in this city, the city of Clearwater, they will rule with righteousness and godliness. God be glorified, Father be magnified. May all that is done today in this meeting bring honor and glory to you. This is our prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
I would like to give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and I'd like to introduce the bass right now. To my far right is our city manager Jennifer Poria.
Good evening.
Next to her is council member Kathleen Beckman.
Good evening.
To my right is our vice mayor Mark Bunker.
Good evening.
My immediate left is city council member Lena Tichera.
Good evening.
Next to her is city council member David Albritt.
Good evening.
And next to him is our city attorney, David Mark Galls.
Good evening.
I'm going to start out with some January service awards. Twenty-year employee Perry Konzen from General Services Department, please come forward.
Perry Konzen began his career path with the city of Clearwater on January 12th of 2004 as a fleet mechanic. He served fire equipment and heavy equipment during the beginning of his tenure. Two years later, he was promoted to a lead worker. With his vast previous fleet experience and knowledge, Perry was promoted to fleet supervisor in August of 2009. Then, in true Perry fashion, with his need to excel, he was promoted to fleet manager on October of 2010. This upward movement is aligned directly with our strategic plan of superior public service with a professional development, skills-based training, and leadership succession planning. Perry is always looking towards ways to improve the fleet department, whether by implementing strategies to improve the turnaround time for vehicle service and repair, improving workforce consistency, or encouraging employees to attend training. This initiative is also another point in our strategic plan of high-performing government and helping to maintain public infrastructure and mobility systems. He also has adopted responsive levels of service and identifies resources required to maintain that level of service. As an example of Perry's hard work and dedication from 2018 to 2023, where the city of Clearwater Fleet Department has been recognized as one of the 100 best fleets in America by the NAFA, which is a true reflection of Perry's vision for fleet. Perry, it is our honor to congratulate you for 20 years of service, and we thank you for your dedication to the city and to the city's fleet department. Well done, sir. Thank you, Perry, for your 20 years of superior public service where you've helped to encourage and retain top talent through your training and leadership. Thank you for your dedication to providing a high-performing government by helping maintain our public infrastructure and identifying the resources required to sustain our levels of service. Thank you again, sir, for your years of service and how you helped Clearwater thrive from bay to beach.
Oh, Perry.
Perry.
Perry even forgot the motion. It's a really nice question.
Yes, special times. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Perry. Also, now we have the employee of the month from Human Resources, Michelle Sheldon, please come forward.
And the words of a coworker. When you think of the city of Clearwater, you think of Michelle Sheldon. She's there on your first day of work and every day thereafter to help in any and every capacity that she can. Michelle's committed to everything she puts her mind to. Her dedication to Training, Recruitment, and Achievement Awards Committee in the city is unmatched. The coworker goes on to say, "When an employee calls or stops by the HR office, Michelle makes a point to stop her work and give them her undivided attention, with them unaware of the amount of work on her desk in awaiting her return." Michelle also provides countless hours, any time of the day or week, to the Achievement Awards Committee to provide smiles, memories, and appreciation to every city employee. She has spearheaded more events than I'm aware of, but some of the examples are employee appreciation cookouts at different departments, bowling, deep-sea fishing trips, festival of trees, Clearwater Marine Aquarium Holiday Party, Kona Ice, Threshers Games, and the Jingle Mingle. Thank you, Michelle, for everything you do. Your superior public service and always thinking of your fellow employees, and for providing and showing how the city attracts and retains top quality by delivering great responsive levels of service to our internal and external customers. Thank you, Michelle. You make Clearwater thrive from bay to beach, and we appreciate you.
Congratulations to Michelle. Okay, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. If we could have Paul Coletti from the Clearwater Garden Club, the president of the Clearwater Garden Club, please come forward. Whereas Arbor Day started in 1872 as a day set aside to encourage the planting, preservation, and appreciation of trees, and whereas Florida Arbor Day has been observed on the third Friday in January since 1886, whereas trees provide countless benefits by improving air quality, providing shade, enhancing our parks and public spaces, reducing stormwater runoff, combating climate change, and prohibiting habitat for wildlife while beautifying or our community, providing habitat, excuse me, while beautifying our community. And whereas Clearwater Garden Club was formed in 1950, having been a member of the Florida Federation of Garden Clubs for 73 years, and the Florida Federation of Garden Clubs is celebrating its 100th anniversary in January 2024, and whereas Clearwater Garden Club is celebrating Florida Arbor Day for the first time on the 100th anniversary on January 19th, 2024 by planting a grandiflora, magnolia, at 11:00 a.m. at 405 Seminole Street. Now therefore, I, Brian Oss, senior mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim January 19th, 2024 to be Florida Arbor Day. I urge all citizens to plant native trees to maintain our ecosystem and promote the well-being of our future generations, and for residents to plant, maintain, and protect trees in the city of Clearwater.
Thank you, Paul.
That's all right. Thank you so much.
Sir, please. Okay. City of Clearwater Public Art Plan to be presented right now.
Good evening. Handbrakes Arts and Cultural Affairs Manager. I wanted to give this presentation to council and the citizens of Clearwater to give a review of all of the art projects we've completed in 2023, as well as some exciting projects we have coming up for 2024. So here's our year-end review. We put some sculptures in Crest Lake Park. We have new murals at Washington Park, and we picked artists and selected designs for the MSC parking garage, the Fire Station 46 sculpture, and the Florida 580 water tank. In February 2023, there were five new sculptures installed in Crest Lake Park by artist Don Giannella. They're placed throughout the park, and there are images of wildlife that can be found there. Next are the new murals in Cochran Park. All these murals were painted by Florida-based artists. We have an ostrich mural that was created by Ernesto Marainca, simply entitled "Ostrich." A butterfly wing mural entitled "Come Fly With Me" by our local artist Alyssa Marie. And finally, a giant dolphin mural entitled "Dolphin Dreamscape" by mural artist Science of Dancer. All these murals were installed in October 2023 and have been a welcomed addition to Cochran Park. You'll often see visitors taking photos of the murals, especially butterfly wings. The next art that will be installed in Clearwater will be the new Municipal Services Building Parking Garage Panel Art. This will replace the birds that have called that garage home since 1997. Local artist known as Dream Labor has been chosen for this project. We held an employee appreciation social where we highlighted the employee art contest winners, which are currently on display at the MSC parking garage. We took four of the top-scoring applications from our open mural call to artists, and we asked employees to vote their favorite. Many of the employees that work at MSC have windows that look directly at that garage, so we felt it was appropriate to ask them what art they wanted to see every day. We had 375 employee responses, and over 60% of the vote was for Dream Labor. This colorful display of Florida fauna will be a welcome art addition along the Pinnell County Trail. Another staple art piece in the city that will be installed in spring of 2024 will be the wave. This will be placed in front of the newly constructed Fire Station 46 on Clearwater Beach. It's a metal sculpture lit from within with images of sea life cut out of the metal. This sculpture will be especially beautiful at night, when the light will eliminate the images from within, making them appear to swim on a wave. The artist for this piece is Jim Belushi, based out of South Carolina. After that, our next major art installation for the city of Clearwater would be a mural on the side of the Florida 580 water tank in Countryside. The mural titled "Tailing" by Florida artist Christian Stanley depicts two red drum fish swaying in a net of mangroves. In July 2023, with the help of our city grants coordinator, I applied for a national art grant for this project. If successful, we will have funding to be able to paint both water tanks at that location. The result of the grant application will be made available in April. If we're successful, installation cannot begin until June 1st for the grant departments. Hence the reason we have to wait until the summer for this project. I also want to talk about our ongoing partnership with the Clearwater Arts Alliance, and their highly-successful Thinking Outside the Box program, which saw 13 new signal box racks in 2023. Six of these were funded by the city. Three were replacements due to signal box upgrades, and three were funded by a grant from the Public Art Designing Board. These were coordinated with our Neighborhoods Department, where the artwork is selected and uniquely designed specifically for a neighborhood chosen by those citizens. Here are some of the images from this year's program. And I would like to note that we were able to tie in our new Clearwater Sister City, "Xene Kill Palm, Mexico," by having a local artist there create the second signal box from the lab. It's a beautiful image and a welcome addition to our city streets. I do think it's important for our residents to know how we choose artists in our pieces. The city of Clearwater puts out a call to artists on our professional website, CallCAFE, or Call for Entry. This site is well-known to most professional artists and used by many city governments, as well as private developers. The artists submit their resumes and examples of past work. These applications are scored by a panel, which is made up of at least one Public Art Design Board member, at least one Clearwater Arts Alliance member, the Arts and Cultural Affairs Department, and other community art professionals of Pinnell County. It also includes a representative from the department where the art will be displayed if it's going to be out of city building. We then ask the top three of five highest-scoring artists for a formal design proposal. Proposals then go back to the panel for voting, and the selected artist in design is then taken to the Public Art Design Board for final approval. I do want to briefly go over how art aligns with our strategic plans. We do have a cultural art strategic plan, which is available on the Arts Page of our city website. In this plan, our vision for the future is stated to be "Support the development of a vibrant city by raising awareness and enhancing visibility of the arts." We accomplish this in many ways, but I feel these two are the most pertinent when we're talking about events like our mural festival or an iconic art piece in Cochran Park. And they are strengthening the identity of neighborhoods through investment in public arts at the neighborhood's level and defining spaces within Clearwater that investment in the arts can be concentrated for maximum impact. Arts and culture also align with the city of Clearwater strategic plan in many ways. The three main ones being to promote Clearwater as a premier destination for entertainment, cultural experiences, tourism, and national sporting events; support neighborhood identity through services and programs that empower community pride and belonging; and inspire citizens' participation through civic engagement, volunteerism, and volunteerism to build strong, inclusive, and engaged communities. Some of our plans for 2024, as I mentioned before, we are having a downtown gateway mural festival that's planned for March of this year. This is in partnership with our CRA, which the council has voted to approve partial funding for last past season, so I thank you for that. Murals will be painted on five-day local businesses in the downtown and gateway areas. We will also finish the remaining mural walls in Cochran Park. And the Marina Aviation Department reached out and asked if we could paint a mural on the side of their dockmaster office as well. So we're really excited about that partnership. We'll also continue to look for other art opportunities in Cochran, whether it be a permanent piece or a rotating exhibit. We're currently working on a contract with FDOT that will allow the Clearwater Arts Alliance to wrap signal boxes along Gulf to Bay that are FDOT-owned, so they may expand their program on a highly-visible roadway. We're also in communication with the Parking Department to incorporate a new piece in or in front of the new Osceola parking garage that's being built. Looking at more long-term, we're really excited about incorporating art into the new marquado space. We've been doing research on iconic art pieces in Cochran Park, as well as the new city hall. And we're currently looking at additional funding sources and opportunities for that. If our mural festival in the gateway is successful this year, we hope to repeat that in 2025 in the North Greenwood community. And lastly, we're looking at a staple art piece at the new Clearwater Beach Arena, which is to begin construction this year. Here's our timeline for 2024. We hope to continue to make art and culture a priority in the city of Clearwater. If anyone has any questions or local artists would like to reach out, here's my contact info. And you can also visit myclearwater.com/landbrings. I want to thank you all for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amber. Any questions for Amber?
Great job.
Great job. We appreciate it. Before we go any further, Mr. Taylor. Before we go any further, Mr. Taylor, your shirt is in violation of council rules.
I'm sorry.
We're asking you.
I'm a little.
You're in violation of our rules, and we're asking you to either leave the meeting. Take a break. Okay, welcome back to the January 18th meeting. Let's proceed, and we're going to proceed with the big cleanup Clearwater presentation.
All right. Good evening, council. I'm Cassie Cordova, the Sustainability Manager for the city of Clearwater. And this year I had the pleasure of working on the big cleanup Clearwater. As many of you know, litter is more than just an eyesore. It negatively affects our environment, property values, tourism, quality of life, health, and safety in our communities. UN estimates that 80% of marine debris, that's litter that's in the sea, actually originates from land-based sources, harming marine through ingestion and entanglement. The Keep American Beautiful 2020 National Litter Study found 50 billion pieces of litter in the U.S., almost evenly divided amongst along roadways and along waterways. So that number may sound a little daunting to some, but actually, if you divide it by our population, it's 152 pieces per person. So everybody in the United States went out, picked up 152 pieces of litter, and we'd be litter-free. So our goal here is to help with the litter abatement. And by picking up litter, studies show that litter reggets litter. So by picking litter up off the ground, we encourage others to have better practices. So the city of Clearwater is proud to host the annual big cleanup Clearwater as the largest community-wide cleanup event. So the event starts January, February here. It's a monthly series on Clearwater Beach on the second Friday. And then we have a week-long event October 9th through 14th. And both events are family-friendly events where residents, businesses, visitors, and community organizations are welcome to join in the fun of Clearwater Clean From Beach to Bay. We do provide all the supplies needed, and we dispose of the litter collected. And this event is made possible from a collaboration. And I'm going to turn it over to Megan Jackson, the program coordinator for Keep Pinnell's Beautiful, to highlight some of our sponsors and collaborators.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this annual event is brought to you by several partners, including City Clearwater, Keep Pinnell's Beautiful, Desert Seating Clearwater, Amplified Clearwater, and also Ocean Allies. The collaboration between local government, businesses, and nonprofits is what makes this a truly, truly special event and one that we hope to continue for years to come. We would also like to thank our sponsors. This event would not be possible without them. Their donors' donations help to provide the supplies and tools needed to make this a safe and successful event.
We also want to thank all of the volunteer groups that participated in the twenty twenty-three Big Cleanup Clearwater. The groups included local businesses. We also had a lot of different organizations, school groups, and neighborhood associations as well. Many of the groups that participated in twenty twenty-two returned this year for the big cleanup, and we also had the opportunity to work with several new volunteers as well. So really, our goal with this event is that, you know, we really want everyone that walks away from this event to just have a renewed sense of pride and ownership for the communities and neighborhoods that they call home. So now I'm going to pass it off to Meldean, the Sustainability Specialist of the City of Clearwater.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The big cleanup Clearwater consists of monthly cleanups and a week-long event in October or November. In our monthly series, we've had six hundred and seventy-two volunteers join us to clean our beach and surrounding streets over eleven months. In total, two thousand over pounds of litter were picked up. During the week-long cleanup event in October, twenty-seven sites were cleaned up by eight hundred and eighty volunteers. So the map on the right shows the sites covered this year. The pink areas indicate public sites where anyone could join, and yellow areas indicate privately initiated sites. So sites consist of parks, beaches, trails, streets, schools, and waterways. Close to sixty-five hundred pounds of litter were picked up. To show a few interesting details about this year's program, promotions were done in both English and Spanish for the first time in three years. We had the largest kickoff media and cleanup event in big cleanup Clearwater history. We also hosted the first waterway cleanup by boats. So we're thankful for the partners who provided the vessels, and we are recognizing volunteers with three special awards this year as well, which will be presented in a while. So ocean and waterway trash ranks as one of the most serious pollution problems choking our planet. Coastal cleanups are important through using land litter flowing out to the ocean, harming the natural habitat and animal health. Through large events like this, we hope to raise awareness on coastal trash issues and provide a platform for volunteers to have a personal look into the common trash items in Clearwater. So some of the top categories are cigarette butts, boot wrappers, and tiny foam plastic pieces. Bigger micro, bigger plastic items break down indefinitely into smaller pieces, eventually becoming microplastics, which get into our water source and even the air we breathe. A report from Wildlife Fund suggests that we could be swallowing credit cards weighed in plastic every week. So taking a preventative step, like adopting ocean cleaning practices, is very crucial in reducing trash at its source. Individual efforts will some to massive positive change for the ecosystem if everyone starts somewhere. So to do our part during cleaning, we've included conscious supply preparation in all of our cleanups, which involves the use of green polydies that contains hundred percent post-consumer recycled content, reusable gloves and vests. We've also provided water coolers and provided reusable bottles if anyone did not bring one. Next up, we have the volunteer award presentation. I will pass it on to Kelsey Johnson, our volunteer specialist with the city, who will share more about the sustainably-designed medals that Clearwater Library's Maker Studio produced for our volunteers.
Hello.
I'm Kelsey. So I have the fun job today to present our awards. The award categories was a new thing that we did for twenty twenty-three Big Cleanup. We have three awards this year. So we have the Vampeena, which is the youngest volunteer for our cleanup, the Golden Guardian, the oldest, and the Power Picker. So this actually goes to a whole site that had the highest average weight of trash. And like Melly was saying, we have these beautiful medals that were made by the Clearwater Library's Maker Studio. They were made with sustainability in mind. Some fun facts about those. They were laser etched with our glow forge, three D printed with eco-friendly PLA, made from upcycled wood, and finished with upcycled aluminum soda cans. And the banners are made from upcycled scrap cloth from the sewing program. So thank you again to the Maker Studio. They really exemplified what it needs to be sustainable. So without further ado, I will go ahead and announce our first award. So this is our Vampeena Award, the youngest volunteer. At the time of the cleanup, he was one year old. And fun fact about Malca, he was from the Betty Lane Neighborhood Site. And our next award also goes to someone from Betty Lane Neighborhood. So the Golden Guardian Award goes to a volunteer who's eighty-three years old, Ronald Bettis. And our final award, the Power Picker Award, some fun facts about this site. They have the heaviest average trash. They found two thousand two hundred and two pounds of litter for one site, one cleanup site, including a pair of fishermen's boots, a metal pipe, twenty metal weights, a crib, two TVs, a wooden pallet, and nine hundred cigarette butts. They did amazing. So thank you so much. Power Picker Award goes to the Church of Scientology volunteers at our big Clearwater site. Oh, can we have a little video over here? This is a drone video that was made by Keep Nellis Beautiful.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much. And please stay at the base for this year's big cleanup, November eighth to the sixteenth. The efforts that we do in this cleanup really make a huge difference here in the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, great work. We appreciate that very much. We have an approval of the minutes from the December nineteenth.
Who to approve the minutes?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose your unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda, there any items tonight to be pulled from the consent?
Mayor, I have requested both items, six point three, six point four, and six point five.
Okay, let's start with six point three, please.
Do you want to approve the consent agenda?
Okay, let's, okay, yeah, let's have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those three items, please.
I move we approve consent agenda six point one through six point two.
Six point three.
Six point three? Okay. And then six point-
Six point two.
Six point three was pulled.
Yeah.
How about a third of the consent, just helping out. A third of the consent agenda item, left item, six point three, six point four, six point five.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
I oppose your unanimous. Six point three, please.
After the twelve amendments leased agreement between T.T. Rodriguez Foundation and the City of Clearwater to increase the length of the agreement by ten years from November thirteen, two thousand thirty-five through November twelve, two thousand forty-five, and to complete additional renovations and improvements by the foundation authorized per provisional section.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We discussed the side of my board session. It has to do with the twelve amendment. With T.T. Rodriguez extending their lease by ten years. And at the same time, they are going to contribute one point nine million dollars to the irrigation system. What else?
Any questions or comments from the council? Anyone want to speak to this item? Please come forward.
Captain, Lady, Clearwater. I'm not against this, I'm saying I can teach you the great things. They do a lot of kids stuff, I support. And it's time you guys need to review the contract more than every twenty years, like maybe every two years, just to make sure everything's going all right with the facilities. That's all I have to say. I mean, you do these like twenty-year leases, and they never come up for twenty years, and no one knows what goes on in those places. Maybe Clearwater Golf Club's another one that, and we won't see that one until twenty forty-five. And they're supposedly replacing their irrigation system for seven hundred thousand dollars, but we don't know about that. And T.T. Rodriguez's irrigation system is one point nine million? So I don't know. There's a big discrepancy. I think someone should make sure that the City of Clearwater Golf Course irrigation system is actually replaced, like the state was supposed, said it was supposed to be done when the, when the pipes were moved back in March. Okay? That's it. But T.T.'s is right.
Thank you. Okay, do we have, anyone else want to speak to this? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve it in the item six point three.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
I oppose your unanimous. Six point four, please.
After the purchase order to spend fence company in Clearwater Ford's by fencing and related services, the total not to exceed the amount of one point two million dollars in February fourteen, two thousand twenty-six. For so to Clearwater Head Of Orders Section two point five six three, front one, and C, piggyback for proper purchasing and authorize per provisional section.
This is a purchasing item for fencing. It's an annual item that we have, and we discuss that in our session.
Questions? Any questions or comments? Anyone want to speak to this item?
I'm Mr. Halupa. I think that approving one point two million dollars over a two-year period for fencing and quote-unquote "related services" is ridiculous. Now, I do believe that it's somewhat important for people to understand what piggyback or cooperative purchasing actually means. It's an exception to the competitive process. And as it says there, commodity or service in cooperation with another governmental entity in Florida. Now, this is a little bit interesting. They're piggybacking off of something that Pinellas County is doing. And as it says there, following a solicitation process reaching over twelve hundred vendors, this contract has historically been difficult to competitively source due to the breadth of fencing and cooperative specifies the size and scope of many of the installations. So Pinellas County asks for something that don't exist. Only one vendor comes up with a, with a bid. That's not competitive pricing. Also, not really following the exceptions that are listed there. But once again, it just highlights how City of Clearwater is really pretty poorly managed, and they will do whatever they want. It's absolutely asinine to have a bid for fencing and whatever related services are for one point two million dollars over the next two years. We don't know how it's going to be spent. We don't know where it's going to be spent. We don't know if the fences will all come back down, get cuffed off. And what are related services? Somebody's making some money off of this. It's totally sketchy, and it should not be allowed to happen.
Anyone else want to speak to this item? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve your item six point four.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I oppose your unanimous. Thank you. Six point five, please.
Authorize an increase to existing purchase orders since last preparation in Cincinnati, Ohio for the purchase of first aid and safety supplies and services. Rent on purchase of uniforms, facility services, and crowd protection services, two million to three point eight five million. For so to ensure our credit board direction, two point five six three, front one, and C. Piggyback purchasing through Omni Partners contract number RBE one nine zero 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 two and authorize per provisional section.
We discuss this item in our session on Monday. It is a consensus corporation for a variety of items and services.
Any questions or comments? Anyone want to speak to this?
I'm Mr. Halupa. A variety of items. Wow. So now come send us and request an increase to their allotment from two million dollars to three point eight five million dollars. Another laundry list of undefined supplies and services. Now, again, we're talking about a piggyback. And the piggyback clearly states that it has to be a governmental entity in Florida. Okay? This is the justification. This is what they're piggybacking off of. It's supposed to be a Florida governmental. Facilitate the requested increase to purchase order, in the purchase order. Authorization will be pursued through the same procedural method and master agreement, piggybacking the Omni contract for Prince William County Public Schools. Gee, where is Prince William County Public Schools? Manassas, Virginia. How does that comply with the exception? How does that comply with that? It does not. And again, not only that, but the money that they want to increase doesn't comply, and neither does the money that you've already contracted with them. If you're going to call it a piggyback because it's not in Florida. Now, Omni is nothing but a procurement service. So the City of Clearwater, in their infamous good management, goes through a procurement service to procure or to, I guess, use as an agent, a go-between, between the city and Cintas uniform, which is ridiculous. The City of Clearwater cannot even buy uniforms, but that's not it. It's all this other stuff. It's the laundry list of things that are not listed. It's totally sketchy again. Somebody's getting a lot of money off of this. But you cannot call it a piggyback when the governmental body you say you're piggybacking off of is not in the state of Florida.
Anyone else want to speak to this item? Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose your unanimous. Thank you. Seven point one, please.
After the amendments, we're going to develop plans to establish a certain treaty with rescinding amendments determined to be null, void, or subject to statute bills. The ordinance from seven twelve to twenty-three and pass order from seven four to twenty-four, first reading.
Good evening. Jamie Ocho, meeting in bonus. Again, we saw the sit work session. It's, we had some amendments before you in early twenty twenty-three. We had to rescind them due to Senate Bill two fifty, which required us to rescind anything that was more burdensome or restrictive. They have since established a new bill, House Bill one C, which has removed us from those regulations, so we no longer have to comply with them. So regulations that we rescinded here are now being back to reapprove those. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I wanted the committee development board to meet today to review these unanimously recommended approval. Oh, I wanted the, uh, the community development board to meet today, um, to review these unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this item? First reading?
Mayor, this is ordinance number ninety-seven forty dash twenty-four. It ordnance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, making amendments to the Community Development Code by amending Article three Development Standards. Parking and loading division by amending Article four Development Review and Other Procedures. General Procedures Division by amending Appendix B, U.S. nineteen zoning district and development standards. General provisions, sub-district standards, site design standards, building design standards and administration divisions by amending Appendix C Downtown District and Development Standards. Character District Standards, frontage standards, site design standards, building design standards, flexibility and administration divisions. Certifying consistency with the city's comprehensive plan of proper advertisement, providing perseverance and providing an effective date.
Anyone want to speak to this item? Come forward. Okay.
Hi, my name is Flaherty. All right, so this is your bright Clearwater. The, uh, you have this picture in, it's a dumpster, I guess, a painted dumpster. Um, this dumpster is on top of the drain. It overflows a lot. Um, it's actually getting sited with the trash right now and right now, so yeah, your dumpster is getting sited and it's more trash. Uh, this plan you're doing is this is what the developer's going to use for the next twenty years. Um, I noticed that there's this one thing, uh, North Betty Creek, right? It's, this is the access creek or the access part for the creek when it gets drenched. You see it says public, it's blue. This is the whole creek. All right, I had a big issue because right now, when you go to the future zoning maps, it's red. And you see it says North Betty Creek unleashed. So I've been freaking out finding all the, you guys are switching your zoning maps and everything. It's not just you're switching your zoning maps, you never update your zoning maps. So a park is just going to say commercial zones because no one ever updates it. So in the North Greenwood plan, you have it listed as a park, right? It says in the North Greenwood Park, it was bought in two thousand twelve for heavy access equipment that must be maintained to provide maintenance to the future creek. That's what they showed on this chart. I went out there, there, you've got a pump out station, that's a, that's a lift pump that, that brings all your water for your sewage and stuff and you need to have access. Look, that's what they were out there two days ago fixing this stuff. All right? It's there to get stretched. This is under the bridge. All your bridges, all the way up to the golf course are almost silted up. All right? This is when I, when I contact the, um, Parks Department about this park, they, they send me this. It's a park. This is the easement. So if you do have to have, um, anyway, so I, so here it is from, I went out, I went out and pick up trash all the time because that creek is trash because you don't, you put the dumpsters on the drains. A lot of people pick up trash, but the city could do more. All right? So if people, and you're, so here is the park. It's supposed to be open from what, nine to six, nine P.M. to six P.M.? But when you go on to like their special events, it's not listed as a park. I mean, I'm, I'm not crazy, I'm telling you. So when I started asking about it, Dalk sent me this email, I hope you can see it. My gratuitous assertions are monumental disservice to the community as you purport to support. I don't even know what that means. All right? And then there's the confusion maybe that there are two parcels, one zone park and the other one not. And then Art says this area is not a park, this has been a park, the area itself is a park. Apparently this map has been mislabeled. So the whole engineering has mislabeled this park because Art is, what in the world are you guys asking?
Anyone else want to speak to this item? Okay.
You guys need your park, right? We're taking it like this, but we're taking it.
Ms. Flaherty, you know the rules. So you had your three minutes. All right. We, do, do we read the ordinance?
We have not.
Okay.
So this is, uh, ordinance number ninety-seven twenty-one dash twenty-four. An ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida relating to the Clearwater Comprehensive Plan, repealing the plan's future land use, transportation, housing, utilities, coastal management, conservation, recreation, open space.
Yeah. It's the, the seven point one.
I'll rest it out.
It's seven point one.
He read it.
He read it already.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, do we have a motion? Move to approve seven point one.
Second.
All in favor.
I didn't think so.
Okay.
Order twenty twenty-five is, is this is.
It's seven point one.
Seven point one.
See if they got out of order.
He read it.
This is, this is. Ninety-seven forty-nine twenty-four is not coming up.
I'm still on the text amendment. You would read the amendments, the text amendments of the, of the, of that before we. Okay, I got you. Sorry.
All right, so now we can have a motion in a second. Are we good?
We're good, Luke.
I did not read the bill twenty twenty-five ordinance. I read the initial one on the text amendment. It's not a comment.
They own the text amendment.
Because that's what I was reading. Where's it going?
Then he said the law court. He said it was set. He said it was out.
But, oh, do we read it? Ninety-seven twenty-one dash twenty-four is the, because you're looking at me now. That's not.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay. Okay, ninety-seven forty, I had, I had just read.
Yes. Yes, now we have a motion. Yeah, he read ninety-seven.
Okay, we're good?
We're good.
All right, we out of motion? In a second, is that correct? Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose you now. Thank you. Second readings, public hearing, point one, please.
Is that, oh.
We now agree to it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think we're back on, back in order. So ordinance number ninety-seven twenty-one dash twenty-four and ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida relating to the Clearwater Comprehensive Plan, repealing the plan's future land use, transportation, housing, utilities, coastal management, conservation, recreation, open space, intergovernmental coordination, capital improvements, public school facilities and property rights elements. And adopting Clearwater twenty forty-five, the city of Clearwater's new comprehensive plan, including the quality places, mobility, parks and public places, conservation and coastal management, support services and plan implementation chapters, which include all required plan elements and maps pursuant to chapter one sixty-three, part two, Florida statutes providing perseverance and providing an effective date.
Anyone want to speak to this item? Matt, do we have a motion? Okay. Different item.
Twenty forty-five. Another thing this plan does. About twenty forty-five. What it does, it moves activity centers basically from this area down where, I'm in the East Gate. This is where I live in my bike shop. It moves it, everything down to downtown, the downtown district or the downtown PDB area. All right? And the reason for that is because they want to have a street market down it. But you know what? You guys built a street market right up in the gateway. All right, you spent seventeen million dollars. It's there. I bet, I wrote a really long email today. It's attached to the minutes. If anyone wants to read it, it will be attached. So creating a successful gateway, you have three parts. It had a street market. All right, there's a street, that's the little market. It was on Cleveland Street. That's what the city has built. All right? Hibbert approved it. You guys approved it on May twenty-first, but you guys didn't know about it because you two were never told about it. Please read that email. Go through that. All right? So this twenty forty-five wipes out my neighborhood as anything to have any development done to it. I mean, I think that's a horrible thing. This plan basically puts a stake in the North Greenwood Park and wipes out my neighborhood from all redevelopment stuff. The street market is seventeen million dollars all gone down to because of this little blue dot. If you move, if you add a little blue dot right where it's supposed to be, where all the other Clearwater development plans, the U U L I plan says we should do it, every other plan says we should have something there except you guys for some reason. For twelve or for twenty years, we've been developing. It's built, it's there. Oh, everyone don't drive down Cleveland Street. If you're wondering why there's little holes all around, that's why. Okay? Now, there is a grassy area and that was the, that's the Mercado. And that was supposed to be a pocket park to honor the Hispanic, the Hispanic community. But you guys went after the, the Mercado and, and instead of the street market because you want to keep all the street market activity into downtown Clearwater. Market Marie was built up by the downtown development board. They put seventy thousand dollars in the past year. Okay? They have exclusive right basically to the Coachman Park. The Hispanic, this Hispanic market can't, this is what it was built for. They have like weekend, like little, like farmers markets. You took our farmers markets away. You're taking the beach access away with this bill. And you think this is great for the community for twenty forty-five, for the next twenty years? Seriously? Seriously?
Anyone else want to speak to this item?
Yeah.
Need to read the, uh.
It's been.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item eight point one.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Oppose unanimous. Eight point two, please.
Eight point two is ordinance number ninety-seven twenty-nine twenty-three on second reading. And ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, making two easements as further defined by Exhibit A Utility Easement per Resolution eighty-six seventeen, recorded in O.R. Book sixty-one seventy-nine, page two ninety-nine, and Exhibit B fifteen-foot alley, recorded in deed book fifteen thirty-six, page twenty-one, as recorded in the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Any comments, questions on this item? Anyone want to speak to this item? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve agenda item eight point two.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I oppose you now. Thank you. It's now tied in for citizens to be heard regarding on his line on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes and please make sure you fill out a card for the clerk, seeing who you are.
I'm Mr. Hilleba. And I... Some blanks that can be filled in there. I do however want to thank you, Mr. Alts, for your comments at the work session regarding the, uh, certain campaign regularities. I think you deserve a couple thumbs up. Now, as the Clearwater police recruits were swearing in, you know, new officers, let's not forget a couple of recent events. And could I add that for that, please? Right on the heels of the Nicholas Paloma debacle comes the disaster of Ryan Tahere. This is another example of the shoddy hiring practices done with incomplete background checks by Clearwater police. Are we not putting these things up? Thank you.
No, not.
Eric Gandy says, "We immediately initiated an internal investigation and placed him on administrative leave." Well, not according to what Saint Pete Con said. He has a history of unruly behavior, mental health, substance abuse issues that go back at least three years. So there was nothing immediate, Mr. Gandy, that you did. It's just a lie. Now, it seems that once hired, city management and police supervisors tend to look the other way at the moral and illegal actions of some Clearwater police officers. It's too bad because when they do that, it bastardizes their position of public trust and authority and it goes on and on and on with Clearwater police. So, you know, new hires, welcome to the dysfunctional, self-serving and unnecessary Clearwater police department. It needs to be shut down. We can save a lot of money. It'd be good city management, contract law enforcement services with the primary law enforcement agency, and that would be Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. And let's not forget that the First Amendment supersedes Roberts Rules and Rule fifteen.
Sir, in the back, you're out of order. You're wearing a T-shirt that's against the council rules by naming individuals. Please remove him from the meeting. Let's take a break. Welcome back to the January eighteenth meeting. Anyone else for citizens to be heard regarding items not on the agenda, please come forward.
Good evening. Maria Lynch, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I was very disheartened to read the articles that came through this morning. I knew that these city elections would get nasty, would get ugly. I did not expect for it to originate up here on this dais, particularly Mayor's chair. Kathleen, in her tenure, has been transparent, values-based, straight forward, and you all can attest to that. I think it is too much to ask of these races that it be issues-based, but I don't think it's too much to ask that the people all here on this dais focus on the people's business, not on politics. And that any aspersion that you appear to cast may not come to your positions, whether they're elected or appointed, be from your private life, or where, every other part outside of your elected duties.
Anyone else?
Councilmember, my name is Gary Baker. My daughter owns a property on North Beach, owns the asset there. I think you're all aware, we got some real problems with our stormwater problems up on North Beach. And we've had two or three emergencies in the last couple of months. The people there are very, very concerned about what's going on. We were really quite happy that Councilmember Beckman actually came up there, talked to people, listened to their concerns, and then she, she communicated. And she told them, "Look, I've talked to people in the city, the city planning department, I'm sorry, the city works department and city utilities are trying to come up with some plans. We're going to have a meeting on January thirtieth, a strategic planning committee meeting, and that's going to, some of these issues can be raised there." That's what we want our elected officials to do. And so, last night, I was shocked when I listened to your, to a recording of your work session. And to have anyone say that these type of communications are electioneering is ridiculous. This is exactly what we want our public officials to do. So, all I can say is, I commend Councilmember Beckman for keeping the community informed, and I have no idea what the rest of you are talking about. Good thing.
Anyone else?
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff, my name is Barbara Sori Love, and I'm here with Pastor Arthur Childs, and we both live in Clearwater, Florida. Here with me today are Clearwater of Pinellas County Ministerial Alliance, which represents the Clearwater Colored Cemetery Society, and the Clearwater High School Student Freedom Ambassador Representative. We've come here today to ask the city council to purchase the historic Friendship Missionary Baptist Church, built in nineteen thirty-nine, located on four-nine South Madison Avenue, Clearwater, and place it under the auspices of the downtown Clearwater Prospect Lake CRA. The asking price, excuse me, is seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We are also asking for an additional two million dollars to finish renovating the church and grounds for its rich history and ancestral significance. Renovating the property will help preserve the cultural heritage of the Clearwater Heights, also known as the Mike Dixon subdivision, one of the first African-American settlements built in Clearwater the year nineteen oh nine. Pastor Childs is the great-great-grandson of Mike Dixon. Pastor Lee, the church's last active minister, was supposed to be here today, but because of health reasons, he's not here. My family home is located on Bull Street, two doors down east of Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. I have fond memories of attending the church as a young girl. For posterity, we are asking the city council to purchase the historic Friendship Missionary Baptist Church and place it under the auspices of the downtown Clearwater Prospect Lake CRA. Thank you for your time and fairness to make Clearwater a better place to live and play for all of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to add with, you know, the reason we want this, that's the only historical building left on what we used to call the Heights, where we grew up at. My grandfather purchased that property years ago. Our church was on the other end of Madison, where Frank Plumb parking garage is, is where my grandfather preached. And this particular church is on the other end of Madison. It's the only property building standing. We are trying so desperately and bravely to maintain the memories of our forefathers, ancestors, to have something to remind and teach our next generation about where we come from and who we are. And with the pushes of this building, it will help us so much. It will help us so much. I don't know what it'll take. I don't even know if you will consent, but it's our prayer that you would help us, you know what you mean?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on items not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Mike Master Sario, a Clearwater resident. I also belong to the North Beach Association, the Clearwater Beach Association. I want to give my hat, the fact I had to, Dan Slatter, Jennifer, and Marcus. They were at the association meeting, which also had about fifty or sixty members from the North Beach living there. And that was talked about on what needed to be done, a short-term plan, a long-term plan. I did not see Councilmember Beckman there, but the city did a great job of showing off what needed to be done now and in the future. So I applaud the city for taking initiative to do that. I think that every member wants to find out what's going on. They should be part of the association. They should hear and have a voice. Even if they're not a member, they can go to the meetings and find out what's going on. And not a select few people get information. So I think everybody deserves information, David. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on items not on the agenda?
City Mayor, council members, Mr. Del, Mr. Schlatter, Mr. Muggles and staff. My name is Rudy Michael. I'm speaking as an individual tonight. I also want to congratulate a number of you that sit on the city council, those that are members of the staff of the city, in that as an individual, I've asked a lot of questions of a number of you. You've always been forthcoming and kept up, be very up to date. I'm also aware that several of you have attended different organizations that I belong to within the city neighborhood organizations, also with the, with the North Beach Association, Clearwater Beach Association. And I'm very appreciative of the fact that you have been very forthcoming in plans of how we're going to resolve or rectify issues that are affecting the various neighborhoods. So I want to make sure that everybody receives credit for that. Ms. Beckman, Mr. Shara, has been in attendance at a number of these meetings and have answered questions that were brought forth by the neighborhood citizens within Clearwater. So I just wanted to make the point that it's important for the city to share what is being done in order to resolve issues. It's a great area of transparency and communications, and I just want to express my thank you to everybody for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, let's move on. City Manager reports ten point one, please.
I approve the joint participation agreement G two zero by two between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation. Parking lot expansion re-adaptation at the Clearwater Airport, rock rights for official execution, and adopt resolution twenty-four by one.
Good evening, Councilman McDonald, Clearwater, Rain Aviation Director. This is just a eighty-twenty grant to state for the parking lot construction for the new terminal project. As discussed, that Tuesday meeting, if you have to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments on this item? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item?
Mayor, this is Resolution number twenty-four dash zero one, a resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, authorizing the execution of a joint participation agreement between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation for a grant to design new terminal and FBO building at the Clearwater Airport, providing an effective date.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item ten point one.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed or opposed? Thank you. Ten point two, please.
I approve the joint participation agreement G two zero eight six between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation. Geotechnical and survey of airport property at the Clearwater Airport. Authorize appropriate official execution and adopt resolution twenty-four dash two zero two.
This JSEF grant is a eighty-twenty grant, also to survey and do some geotech work at the airport for all the upcoming projects. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Resolution ready?
Resolution number twenty-four dash zero two, a resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, authorizing the execution of a joint participation agreement between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation for a grant to design new terminal and FBO building at the Clearwater Airport, providing an effective date.
No motion?
Move to approve item ten point two.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed or opposed? Thank you. Ten point three, please.
I approve Clearwater Credit Ordinance, Chapter thirty-three, Waterways and Vessels by amending Article One in General Article Two. City-owned docking facilities in Article Three vessels and creating a civil penalty for unpermitted use of city-owned marine facilities for commercial use at pass ordinance ninety-seven forty-one on that from four on Thursday.
This is just to update the ordinance for Chapter thirty-three, Waterways and Vessels. We discussed this on Tuesday. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Okay, can I read the ordinance, please?
This is ordinance number ninety-seven forty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, making amendments to Chapter thirty-three, Waterways and Vessels, by amending Article One in General, Article Two, City-owned Docking Facilities, and Article Three Vessels to clarify, revise, and modify existing articles and sections, amending section thirty-three point oh two six, establishing a civil penalty for unpermitted commercial activity in a city-owned marine facility and establishing citation procedures, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
No motion?
Yes. Motion to approve agenda item ten point three.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed or opposed? Thank you. Ten point four, please.
I approve the joint participation agreement G two zero eight zero between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation. Design corporate hangers at Clearwater Airport, authorizing appropriate official execution, and adopt resolution twenty-four dash two zero three.
This is another JSEF grant offered by the state, eighty-twenty, to design commercial hangers out of the airport.
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public wish to discuss this item? Now, can you read the resolution, please?
This is Resolution number twenty-four dash zero three, resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, authorizing the execution of a joint participation agreement between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation for a grant to design new terminal and FBO building at the Clearwater Airport, providing an effective date.
No motion?
Move to approve agenda item ten point four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or opposed? Thank you. Ten point five, please.
I approve joint participation agreement G two five six seven between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation, adopt resolution twenty-four dash zero four, authorize transfer from airport funds, revenues of twelve thousand eight hundred forty dollars, and authorize appropriate official execution.
This is another JSEF grant offered by the state. This is to remove vegetation that's on the north side of the airfield. It'll be compliant with FAA regulations for the GPS approach that we're wanting to put out.
Any questions or comments? Anyone wish to discuss this item from the public? If not, please read the resolution.
Resolution number twenty-four dash zero four, a resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, authorizing the execution of a joint participation agreement between the city of Clearwater and the state of Florida Department of Transportation for Clearwater Airport vegetation removal for GPS approach at the Clearwater Airport, providing an effective date.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item ten point five.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed or opposed? Thank you. City Attorney reports eleven point one.
Hello, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We have one update.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, just real quickly, I just want to let, let you all know that last night, the Coachman Park received another award, this time from the American Planning Association Tampa Bay Area Chapter. So, we'll have that, I left it in my wife's car. I apologize for that. So we'll have it in the office tomorrow. But I suspect we'll be getting a lot of recognition for our park for some time to come, so this was the most recent we want to let you know.
Congratulations. Good job. All right, thank you. Now, City Attorney reports.
Mayor, eleven point one, this is the item on my agenda. This is the item we discussed at the work session to extend our services with Mr. Dunbar and Ms. Hennfield as they join their new law firm of, or happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Need a motion on this? Okay, do you have a motion?
Move to approve item eleven point one.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed or opposed? Thank you. Okay, closing comments. We'll start to the right with the Councilmember Beckman.
Well, I want to take a minute to say Happy New Year to everyone, looking forward to some really great things in 2024. Remind you that we have our strategic plan scheduled for Tuesday, January thirtieth, at nine AM right here. And I'm really looking forward to learning what the staff recommends as priorities in the next fiscal year. And I'm incredibly proud that we are utilizing that strategic plan in this way. Also, on Tuesday, February sixth is rescheduled. We have an important council work session to review the results of our comprehensive housing study. It is comprehensive about housing needs for different income levels, workforce housing, elderly housing, what our stock is, what our needs are. It's incredibly comprehensive and striking information. So you don't want to miss that meeting on February sixth. And then next Thursday, on January twenty-fifth, is the National Point in Time Count. And this is where hundreds of volunteers span out across Pinellas County, well, thousands, maybe millions across the United States. But in Pinellas County, we have hundreds of volunteers that'll be out from seven AM to seven PM to do an accurate point in time count of our unhoused residents in the county. And so we survey them, we ask questions about their situation. They can choose to answer certain questions. But that data is very, very important to us for getting an accurate snapshot picture of, of our homeless people in Pinellas County on that date. And then it, it's reported to the federal government, and it affects our funding. So if you see people out and about on next Thursday from seven AM to seven PM, we wear fluorescent vests, we have different badges, and we have a protocol of questions that we ask. And then also, I just hope everyone has a really safe and enjoyable weekend.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I'm just going to say goodnight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember. Sure.
I just wanted to end with some positive things that we need to celebrate. I was looking over Creative Loafing, and they described amphitheater as, and I quote, "Simply put, there's no other venue like the sound in downtown Clearwater." So I, I really focused on that phrase. Also, in the 2023 worldwide holster for quarter three, which is for our amphitheater, was not able to return all, you know, have all the data, because we just opened in July. It's still ranked worldwide number seventy-seven. So I can't imagine, you know, from here, how we're going to, how we're going to compete. I'm very excited about that. Clearwater now has its first Spanish-written newsletter. And one of the efforts and one of the things that we always discuss about here on the diocese, Clearwater's role regionally, right, that we need to be more vocal and we need to have more presence. So I'm very excited about the Economic Development Department in our city, who's working very diligently to, to really promote Clearwater in every facet. And so we're going to be hosting an event in February where we will be actively engaging with various starters or companies that are going to expand into the United States from different Latin countries. And so as more information comes out, I'll, I'll, I'll share it with you. But I'm very happy that this has become important, to become relevant regionally. It's something that we deserve, and the leadership and the staff is, is, is really doing a good job, and I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you. Mr. Robert.
Well, as Representative Clearwater Ford Pinellas, each year Ford Pinellas shares updates on our agency's accomplishments from the previous year and a look ahead, and a look to the year ahead. Some highlights from this year's report include kickoff of the Advantage Pinellas two thousand fifty Long Range Transportation Plan, the adoption of the Advantage Pinellas Housing Compact and Action Plan, completion of the Target Employment Industrial Land Study, the adoption of the Memorandum of Understanding for the Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, and completion of the plan for alternate, for Advantage Alternate Nineteen, investing in people and places along Alternate Nineteen, US Nineteen corridor, which is going to receive a lot of talk this year about developing that corridor all the way down and connecting it down in St. Pete for affordable housing and also for business op- and also for business opportunities all up and down. So that, that's kind of exciting. The other thing I wanted to mention, um, I've noticed as the campaigns pick up, uh, the beginning of the year, we got a few months left of it. I just wanted to mention that, uh, people that are, uh, supporting the candidates, uh, please don't put the signs in the right of ways. I see it all over, signs are in the right of ways. The city's going to pick them up and throw them away. So just a heads up to everybody. I know everybody's passionate about their candidate, but make sure you have permission to put signs in people's, you know, if they're businesses, make sure you got permission to put it there. And don't put them in the right of way, they're going to be picked up. It's going to be a waste of campaign money. The other thing I wanted to mention, I wasn't going to do it, but I, I'm going to mention this because I think we're all very passionate about the flooding on North Clearwater Beach. All of us are involved in that. I, I attended two meetings last week, one with the CBA. And as Mike Masserio said, this city was there, had a short-term and a long-term plan. Uh, also, I met, um, last week with the, uh, Carlwell HOA and the Carlwell Yacht Club. So there, there's going to be a coalition of the CBA, the Carlwell HOA, everybody north of Acacia is, should be aware that there's, we want to have public input on this. We are going to give public input on this. Next council meeting, there'll be people here talking about it. So it's not something that's going to be brushed under the rug. I think it's time that we really get this stuff fixed. I've lived here all my life and, and I've seen flooding for a long time. It's nothing new. But we're going to get to the bottom of it. The city is very dedicated to getting this thing fixed, and, uh, we're going to have more on that, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Um, I was just told that the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Delk, also won an award last night for distinguished service. So congratulations, Mr. Marier, everyone. Thank you. So that was at the, what, what awards was that again?
It's the American Planning Association, the, uh, Bay Area Chapter of APA.
Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you.
So thank you for all you've done for the city.
Congratulations.
A lifetime achievement overall, I imagine, right? Good job.
Really? Very good, Michael.
That means you've been in your career a long time. I went to a lot of those.
That's a good thing. All right, I'm just going to close the meeting and wish everybody well. Happy New Year, we'll see you next time.